Here. All right, welcome to public comment of the proposed ordinance amending the 2022 fiscal year budgets for Luzerne County Drug and Alcohol. I don't have any slips. Oh, yes, I know, that's the admin code. Any members of the public wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved to second, Jordan.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Propose abstentions, the first public hearing is adjourned, the next one will begin in about five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you said there was one that was. But that one is.
Right. And it is. Why would it? Introduce. Two alleyways.
Okay, 5:50, we'll call a second public hearing to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, so we'll call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Lescavin?
Here.
Mr. Lovaro?
Here.
Mr. Germa?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willovin?
Here.
Mr. Rado? Here.
We have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the admin code at section 2.08, county council investigations and inquiries subsection A. Mr. Rebo?
Reading members of council, with respect to this change in the admin code, I would like to remind council as far as with pertaining to investigations, I have, I did some checking into this and I have not found in any county or other home rule municipality that has to where it requires a super majority for an inquiry or investigation except for Luzerne County. In fact, even in the state House of Representative rules, specifically Rule 51, says, and I'm going to only read two sentences because it's very long, "Any standing committee, subcommittee, or select committee upon resolution introduced and approved by a majority vote of the House may be authorized and empowered to conduct hearings at any place in the Commonwealth to investigate any matter provided for in such resolution. When authorized by such resolution or when approved by the speaker upon application by the standing committee, subcommittee, or select committee authorized to conduct an investigation pursuant to this rule, such committee shall be empowered to issue subpoenas under the hand and seal of the chair thereof, commanding any person to appear before it and answer questions, touching matters properly being inquired but into the committee and produce such books, papers, records, accounts, reports, documents, and data and information produced and stored by electronic electronic data, electronic data processing system as committee deems necessary." So there, there you have it. I mean, I think that there was a little bit of an overreach when it, when this rule was first done, or I don't know if it was changed. Madam Chair, if you can, you know, find out for me and correct me if there was a change between the inception of home rule and now when that super majority vote was put in, but if it wasn't, then I think it was kind of a little bit of short sightedness and overreach by the first council because they probably either wanted to make, you know, be extra cautious, which I can understand, but I think that was a little bit too much of an overreach, so I think the administrative code should be a simple majority, not a super majority for inquiries and investigations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebo. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this topic? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved to second.
All in favor?
All right.
Propose abstentions. Okay, the second public hearing is adjourned. It is 5:53, the voting session will begin at 6:01. Sarah from the Jewish Healthcare Foundation, are you on? If you could briefly just tell me how to pronounce your last name.
Yes, I'm on. My last name is Pessy.
Pessy, got it. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, if I'm allowed, I don't, I don't have like a brain of the iron, but. Right? So that, it is.
So what's happening?
I go through the house.
Don't, don't, don't adjust your schedule because everybody else can eat that and it's my, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do stuff like that.
Yeah.
I have to pay bill?
Yeah, I should. All right. They threw the fridge and they left. Yep. I'll be hungry.
No, I didn't.
It is. You're right. You're right. Well, yes, it's counting.
I tried something.
Yeah.
Finally. Okay, it is. All right, at 6:01, we'll call a meeting to order. We already did the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence, so we'll roll call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Here.
Mr. Lescavin?
Here.
Mr. Lovaro?
Here.
Mr. McDermott? Here.
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willovin?
Here.
Here. Attorney skin, do you want to announce the executive session?
Yes, this evening we had an executive session wherein we discussed litigation matters and personnel.
Thank you. Okay, so recognition and ceremonial proclamation. I have two proclamations. The first one is MHDs. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental illnesses affect almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illnesses recover given the necessary services and support to their communities, and whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities, and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illnesses every year, and whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with mental illness, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors for people with mental illnesses. Now, therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Month, and call upon all Luzerne County citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. This proclamation was presented last week at the Children's Mental Health Art Contest. There were awards on May 16th in the courthouse Rotunda. I have another one. It's teen MHDs. This is whereas Teen Mental Health Awareness Day is designed to raise awareness that mental health is essential for teens and that mental health issues deserve to be treated as health issues with care and compassion, and whereas according to Mental Health America, state of mental health report over 60% of youth with major depression in the United States do not receive any mental health treatment, even in states with the greatest access, nearly one in three are going without treatment. And whereas according to the CDC, more than a third, 37% of high school students in the United States experience poor mental health at least most of the time during COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas teens in Pennsylvania are not currently protected by legislation granting excused mental health fees from school, which can cause mental health crises to compound, and whereas teens today face significant academic pressures, increasing anxiety, and mental health disorders with limited supportive resources. Existing resources within and beyond school environments lack visibility, and whereas youth are often dismissed because of their age, we recognize that our youth are the future and that they deserve to be heard and respected. Therefore, it is important that youth have leadership positions at the decision-making table, and whereas people with disabilities deserve access to a safe and inclusive education. Factors that create unsafe conditions such as bullying, exclusion, and lacking accommodations, including limited remote schooling options, can negatively impact mental well-being, and whereas teens can struggle to find safe and helpful mental health support due to underrepresentation of people of diverse socioeconomic statuses, gender expression, sexualities, races, and cultures in the mental health system. Now, therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby recognize the importance of teen mental health dialogue and policy and proclaim May 23rd as Teen Mental Health Awareness Day in Luzerne County, and honor Zoom call to accept the proclamation are Ms. Giovanna Sella and Sarah Tusk. If either one of you wishes to speak, you could do so now.
Hi, thank you so much. So I'm Giovanna Sella. As mentioned, I'm currently a freshman at Wyoming Seminary and I reside in Dallas. And I just wanted to touch on why it's really important that this proclamation was supported. As you've probably heard, there is a growing youth mental health crisis across, and we believe that by promoting these topics and bringing attention to them, we can hopefully create more resources for youth and therefore help and provide for those in need, which is really important to us and especially me, as I have experienced with mental health issues and myself and in friends. I'm just really proud that this is being supported.
That's great. Thank you, Giovanna. Ms. Pessy, did you have anything?
I just wanted to say thank you, County Council, for recognizing this proclamation. It was written entirely by teens in the Luzerne County. Proclamation was written by Giovanna. So this was part of a statewide effort for PA Youth Advocacy Network. It's a coalitions of teens across the state advocating for mental health, and that this day was also recognized at the state level, and I just want to echo and raise up Giovanna, and thank you for the time.
Awesome. Thank you both for coming on today. And we'll get the official proclamation over to you guys. Okay, do we have any deletions from the voting session agenda?
No, Chair, could I?
Yes.
Just request respectfully request that we move item number eight from the work session and add it on to the voting session tonight. It's the item relating to the county-owned water street bridge over the Sesquikanda River. We discussed the matter extensively at the January public meeting, and it's the, it's the design group, the inspection company to inspect that county-owned bridge.
Sure, so since it, it costs money and it's a budget matter, I don't know if we could move it because of the sunshine act. Okay, let's see.
That is something we discussed, I don't remember, here, I don't, brought up. But I just.
We did, we did discuss it on the work session prior, but since it wasn't advertised on the voting session, I mean, that's an issue we had last meeting as well.
But I, and I'm sorry for piping in. It was advertised, though. The, I mean, the voting session agenda was out there. The work session agenda was also out there. And it was discussed in January. I mean, Attorney Skin wasn't present, so he wouldn't know. Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to move discussion regarding resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for inspection of water street bridges, number eight from the work session. We're going to move it to the voting session. It would be number 13. We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call on adding that?
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lovaro?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willovin?
Yes.
Mr. Rado? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other deletions, additions to the voting session agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda with others?
So moved, one more, second, Jordan.
All in favor? Abstentions opposed, okay, the agenda is adopted with that addition. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the. Mr. Griffin?
I have two items on the agenda that I'd like to discuss with council prior to your, considering them on the agenda this evening. The first item is item number five regarding the motion to adopt a resolution approving CASA annual fundraiser event to be held at the Luzerne County courthouse. The concern I have with that is that to get that, from what I understand from the detail on the agenda, is to allow a waiver for those, for that organization to have alcohol beverages in the rotunda. I certainly support CASA's annual fundraiser. I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, do we want to start that precedent where we allow people to use alcohol, have alcohol beverages in the rotunda of such a beautiful building at the risk of now promoting drinking and driving, first of all, but secondly, spilling alcohol beverages in the rotunda? I think council should pass a resolution and a piece of legislation that says we can't have anything like that on county property, period, anywhere, let alone in the rotunda. If they want to do a fundraiser and they're going to have alcohol, they certainly could do that at another facility, whether it be a convention center or a ballroom somewhere, someplace that's not on county property. I just think we leave ourselves wide open for problems with, first of all, damage to the rotunda, but more importantly, I just don't think we should be promoting that type of activity on county property. The second item I have is item number nine. It's the motion to adopt resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance for Hazelton Public Transit. Concern I have with that is, as everybody that has watched council, we've been trying to clear that whole Hazelton City Transit issue up. There's always been an argument that if we take the funding away, people who have used that service won't have bus service in southern Luzerne County, and I certainly don't want to see us inhibit that. However, I don't think we should be continually paying this fee for a private bus service. Hazelton City Transit has their own bus service. It's a an entity funded by the city, yet they put no money of their own into it. It's my first concern. Mr. Haas, who was council last year, cut the funding by 20%. I would suggest this council cut the funding again by 20% and put a sunset clause on that funding to give them a year to figure out how they're going to get funding next time. Because this is a recurring problem. Every single year, we have the same problem with Hazelton City Transit, where we have to fund them, and we either cut their funding or we have consternation about whether we pay them or we don't. So I think we should sunset that. Documents, obviously, the other concern that I have is the mayor signed the documents. He had the paperwork on March the 15th. The deadline was May 4th, now May 24th. He signed the documents on April 19th that stated he has the guarantee of funding. Council didn't even meet yet. But the language that he puts in there is says local contributors. Doesn't say Luzerne County is going to give them the money. It says local contributors. So I have some real problems with this whole operation. So I appreciate council's consideration on those two items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Mr. Rebo?
Members of council, on number nine on the agenda, I also have concerns. My concern has always been with respect to Carbon and Schoolville County having their, those routes funded when it's Hazelton in Luzerne County that should be funded, their portions. And as I, as I went through the history and I told counts, previous councils this over the years, it was Can Do who, Can Do organization that wanted those bus routes put in because after the construction and development of those facilities, those warehouses, they wanted those, you know, those routes to be put in so workers would be able to be transported from those two counties to those, those warehouse facilities for work. So, I mean, Senator Argo was on the call last meeting. If the state wants to increase the contribution or if Can Do wants to, as Controller Griffith said, local contributors, then I have no problem with that. But if it's Luzerne County footing the bill for Carbon and Schoolville County, that's just, that's just wrong, in my humble opinion. Also, with regards to what was just added for the, the bridge, I would remind Solicitor Lipsansky, under the mandate. I would remind Solicitor Lipsansky, under the mandated sunshine law, under section seven twelve point one C, business arising within twenty-four hours before a meeting, an agency may take official action on a matter of agency business that's not listed on a meeting agenda if the matter arises or is brought to the attention to the agency within a twenty-four hour period prior to the meeting and is. And number two, the matter is of de minimis in nature and does not involve the expenditure of funds or entering into a contract or agreement by the agency. I don't believe the funds that are needed for the approval for the bridge funding is of a de minimis nature. So I strongly believe and disagree with the solicitor's interpretation of the amendment to the sunshine law. And I would advise, I would suggest to council that you get the solicitor to think on that one before you act. Thank you.
I'll just say again, both agendas were posted as of Friday, so moving it from the work session to the voting session, the information was public as of Friday.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Yes, John Newman, Nanticoke, Pennsylvania. Item six, item six. And I'm not against item six at all, although I do notice that it says act funds to resurface Kirby Avenue. Now, from what I've read, we're talking about reconstructing Kirby Avenue. So my question is, what is it? Is it a reconstruction or is it a resurface? And obviously, there are big dollar differences between the two. That's what I'd like an answer to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other members of the public? Okay, here and now, we'll move on. Motion to approve the minutes of the May tenth, twenty twenty-two voting session?
Motion, second.
Our favor? Abstentions opposed? Motion to approve the minutes of the May sixteen, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and second, all favor? Abstentions opposed? Number one, introduction of ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-three long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, Miss Lawrence.
Do we need a motion and a second? This is a budgetary? Manager Smith?
What's the question?
I don't know if we need to have a vote on this because of manager Smith.
It's automatically introduced, please, from the county manager.
That's correct.
Okay. I apologize, the county manager, and it was just an introduction, so it could be automatically. Thank you, Mr..
There's no vote.
Number two, motion to adopt ordinance amending the twenty twenty-two fiscal year budgets for Luzerne County drug and alcohol.
Second.
Okay, roll. Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Number three, motion to adopt resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of careless men versus Luzerne County children and youth services.
So.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Lombardo. Roll call, Miss Lawrence. Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Number four, motion to adopt resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Mark Baynot versus Luzerne County.
So moved.
Second, Thornton.
Okay, number first and second, roll call. Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no. Number five, motion to adopt resolution approving CASA's annual fundraiser event to be held at the Luzerne County courthouse.
Motion.
Second, Thornton.
Roll call, Miss Lawrence.
Another question?
Sure.
I have a question. We had a comment from Mr. Griffin as regards to alcohol. As we all know, Rocking River comes in July. They have discounted property down there and give a lot of alcohol down there. That's part of fundraising. Also, there's been several weddings here over a period of years, not recent, over a period of years. But they did have their ceremony, they did have their rehearsal and they did have refreshments with alcohol. Now that's the presence that's been certain past.
Also, I believe that the event is moving outdoors, I can imagine.
I just have a question regarding that because I wasn't around. Do they have alcohol in the courthouse or outside the courthouse?
Weddings are inside.
That's right.
And we return. And they set up a fresh area to be outside our groups.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGinley, second by Mr. Thornton, roll call. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to resurface Kirby Avenue in Kirby County.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Lombardo, second by.
Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Belovitch?
Under question. Also, is it a reconstruction or a resurfacing?
I have, I've spoken to Mr., could I have, I'm sorry. I spoke to Mr. Flech in his office two weeks ago. It is definitely a resurfacing project. It's going to be resurfaced with two and a half inches of asphalt for the entire road for one point two miles. However, there are some pretty severe deep puddles in the road where, from an engineer's standpoint, you can't just resurface puddles. You have to fix them. So the puddles will be sock cut out and they'll go with the proper base, subbase, and then the road will all be even, then they'll two and a half inch resurface the whole thing. The subbase repair represents about ten percent of the whole project. So the whole hundred percent of the project will be resurfaced, I think, yeah.
Thank you both. Roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Eugenia Galley versus Luzerne County, Luzerne Wyoming County Mental Health and Development and Amy Tomkowski.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, second, roll call, Miss Lawrence. Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Belovitch?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Loscavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Nope.
Mr. Rado?
No.
Motion fails. Number eight, motion to adopt resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance for Luzerne County Transportation Authority.
Motion, second.
Our first and a second, roll call, Miss Lawrence. Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Motion back to number nine, motion to adopt resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance for the Hazelton Public Transit.
So move, second.
The first and second, roll call.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to one fifty-eight percent as was done last year. Second.
All right, wait, wait, wait.
That'd be one fifty-eight seven.
So we're changing one ninety-four ninety to eighty percent value to the map.
One fifty-eight seven. As it's done last year. I actually think by factors, twenty thousand dollar reduction. That was twenty percent. But that's a move.
So your amendment is to change that and just both that first one and that second one?
Yeah.
Okay, that was made by Mr. Lawrence. Would you second that, right, sir? Okay, we have a motion in a second, so.
On the question, on the question, correct question? Now, you want me to?
No, go ahead, because we have a first and second.
I'm not going to be supporting this amendment as I didn't do last year. Hazelton is in a unique situation, as we all know. Our transportation up north, we have Colts coming down here. We're going, LCTA going up there. Down south, we have Hazelton's roots are going down. Some of them are going down into Carbon County and Schoolville County. They don't come up this far. So others stuck with the twenty-one thousand dollars that they can't get from, they tried from, from southern, from down, from down at Schoolville and Carbon. And they've been trying for every single year, perhaps maybe we as the counties to try to get that money. Perhaps Office of Law and County Manager should try to get that. This is no way should fall on Hazelton to pay that extra money. It's not their fault. They're providing transportation for people to come into Luzerne County. Maybe they're going to work. Maybe they're going to the doctor. Maybe they're going to Mohegan Sun. They're helping people. Why do we have to have them be, be, be paying the extra twenty thousand dollars that we didn't get from, they didn't get that from the Carbon and from Schoolville? So that's the question we should, we should ask ourselves. Don't penalize Hazel. They're doing something good. They're helping people. And sometimes we forget that Hazelton's still part of Luzerne County. Sometimes we, we, we consider them only part of Luzerne County when it comes down to voting. But they are part of our county. And, and, and no way should they have to pay this. It's not their fault. They're helping people. We should try to get the money from them.
I would also like to respond to that. Does Colts have any other rival transportation authority? Schoolville, why do we have to have a Hazelton area transit and Luzerne County transportation? Why can't they just come together and work together for all of Luzerne County? They want to be such a part of joining the county as a whole. Why can't they work together to be one organization?
Well, that's something that they could discuss.
I'm pretty sure that was spot in the past. I believe you brought that up and they also had problems then. I think they should be one organization. They can receive all the funding.
I think we also tried to put Colts and LCTA together and that was shut down.
So that's, that's cross-county. This is one.
Well, I'm just saying.
It should be one. So why do they?
That's something they can, they can work out or they can try to work it out. But I, I, there's no way that Hazelton should be penalized and take money out of their budget. When they're helping people. Come on, that doesn't make any sense.
I think since they're their own entity, they need to chase that money.
They tried. I think, I think they've been trying every year and they're not getting.
Well, then they should reach out to Mr. Argo because he just called in at the last meeting. So what could I do for you guys? Well, get him that twenty percent?
Well, certainly they, certainly could try, certainly we could try.
Thank you. Mr. Urban and Mr. Lombardo had their hand raised this week. Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, I can also say that Mr. Schnee just recently became a state director as well, this county council. Somebody should lobby him. When, when you look at the ridership numbers, though, you know, and everybody was claiming that, that a lot of these ridership numbers are going to the, to the parks, well, your own number showing four thousand eighty-nine riders for the entire year. That, you know, how many loops do you have a day that, that go around? Because if I go into dividing that three hundred and sixty-five days in the four thousand eighty-nine, it's only eleven riders per day. And then if you want to divide it into how many loops it does or how many that routes, or how many kinds that route loops around, it's four or five times a day. We're only talking about three people on a bus. So, you know, that's a pretty expensive ask. So I think you need to start consolidating your services. When I look at LCTA, which are already off topic, I mean, Center Point only had eleven thousand four sixty-two. And the most riders are in Nanticoke, which has seven four thousand three sixty-six, seven types more riders than Nanticoke and the area, et cetera. I understand that most of the ridership is at Hazelton Marketplace, West Hazelton Freeland. But I, I just don't see where it's a huge value in order to take a big bus to run around like a handful, it'd be for a dozen, two dozen people per day. I get it, it's a service. It's not supposed to make a whole lot of money, but it, it, it needs to be consolidated. Really needs to be consolidated as one organization in this town. I, I think the two buses could work toward that. And, and I'm going to propose an amendment right afterwards that be sunset, given Hazelton getting more money after this year. Because they're their own entity. They need to play ball. If they want to be one county, one Luzerne county, then let them get together with LCTA, create an agreement. And work together as, as one transportation authority within this town. Because these ridership numbers, we'd be better off hiring private Uber drivers, picking people up to their, from their house and delivering to their destination at a cheaper price than having the whole big bus mechanics, fleets, fleet mechanics. You know, the price of fuel, administration buildings and all the insurances that go along with it. It's a pretty expensive ask. We're relatively, you know, we're not a lot, we are a large county, but I don't, I just don't see a lot of people using the transportation system by, by now, based on the ridership numbers ever provided.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Mr. Lombardo?
I just wanted to echo Mr. Perry's sentiments. You know, Hazelton is part of Luzerne County as well. And every time that I go down there, every time that I speak to people from the southern end of the county, they talk about how they don't feel like they're part of this county and, and the way that we govern. I understand and I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Urban, Mr. Belovitch, that we need to consolidate. That's something that I'm a hundred percent for and I think we need to extend that conversation and, and maybe try to influence it a little bit, but I don't think that punishing the Hazelton City Transit Authority is, is going to help right now at this moment.
Yeah, my comments on the issue are this. Absolutely, everything that was said here is accurate and true. It probably is not the most efficiently-run bus company. We all acknowledge and have seen where Hazelton City officials kind of drop the ball sometimes on their legislation, the way they pass things, the way, you know, they send us letters and things like that. And I agree that it should be consolidated into the Luzerne County bus system. However, you, you, you got to recognize the fact that whenever here at the last meeting, Mr. Sharp, he testified that ninety percent of the routes are in Luzerne County, serving Luzerne County residents. And to me, I don't care if they call it the Hazelton Bus Company, the LCTA, or just transportation company. They're disturbing us. Now, I have an issue as everybody does with Carbon and Schoolville Counties that they don't pony up their fair share. And that's where we should be directing our angst here. And we shouldn't do it once a year when this comes up. It's unfair to say that those other ten percent routes are strictly Carbon and Schoolville residents. I'm sure there's residents from the Hazelton area that can on those buses and go down to those counties, whether it be work-related, shopping or whatever. So they're primarily overwhelmingly serving Luzerne County residents and I think whatever happens here with the vote following tonight's meeting in the very near future, I think the chair of council and the acting county manager should send a very well-worded letter to both counties, Carbon County and Schoolville County. And we need to get on them for not pulling up, you know, what they should be pulling. So that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Okay, we have a first and a second on the amendment to this resolution to change the amount to one hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars. We have a roll call on just the amendment. Mr. Belovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
No.
Four yes, six no.
Failed. The amendment fails? Okay, so we have a first and a second on the resolution, the way that it is, but we have a roll call on just the resolution without the amendment, so it's a 198 or 90.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Wulovich?
No.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Three no, seven yes.
Motion passes. Motion to ratify resolution accepting the designee as acting county manager. So.
Second.
First and a second.
Just want to make a brief comment, and I won't be supporting this because it ties in, you know, Milva's resignation with her designee, and I don't believe the designee, you know, should be chosen by the previous acting county manager based on the charter language. And mostly charter language, you know, is for incapacitation or unable to serve. It doesn't really mention anything about resignation. Unfortunately, these, these two things are tied together. And I don't support it in all these terms.
Thank you, so we have a first and a second, roll call?
Mr. LaScavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion passes, so next we have appointments of boards and commissions, first we have the arts advisory. Board, do we have a motion to open nominations?
To move.
Second.
All favor. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Carl Frankel.
Second.
Do we have a motion to close nominations?
Second.
All favor. Abstentions opposed, since there's only one, one nominee, we'll just go right to the resolution. So we'll have a motion to appoint Dr. Carl Frankel to the arts advisory board.
Thornton.
Your first?
Second.
Second, roll call? Mr. McDermott? I think I heard it first.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Yeah.
Next, we have the Loser County Community College Board of Trustees, we have a motion to open nominations.
Second.
All favor. Abstentions opposed, nominations are open.
We have a motion to have a roll call.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Joseph Long. Oh, sorry.
Do we have a second for roll calls?
Second.
And then we have a motion for Mr. Long.
Second.
Motion to close?
Motion to close the nominations.
She got it, second. All favor. Abstentions opposed, okay, nominations are open, so if we could go around, we'll do a roll call and please state your nominee.
Joseph Long. Mr. McKinley?
Mr. Long?
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Thornton?
Joe Long.
Mr. Urban?
A roll call.
Mr. Wulovich?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Venus?
Mr. Long.
Mr. LaScavage?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Rado?
Mr. Long?
Mr. Long went for roll calls.
Okay, congratulations to Dr. Carl Frankel and Mr. Joseph Long, if we could just, on the resolution.
Motion for the resolution, appoint Mr. Long.
Second.
Motion, I think it was Mr. Urban beat him on the second.
No.
Roll call?
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Motion to adopt ordinance amending the administrative code at section 2008, county council investigations and inquiry subsection X.
So, so move.
On the question?
Motion by Thornton, second by Urban, session by Lora.
Um, so I, I was not at the last meeting, so I didn't really have a chance to speak during the work session, but at this, I'm going to be opposing this today. Historically, when we've had inquiry committees here on council, they've all been pretty unanimously, as far as I'm concerned, I think there was a 911 inquiry committee when a dispatch was out, gone out wrong. Obviously, the election inquiry committee last year, and then the prison inquiry committee. You know, I, I think that having a simple majority for this sort of sets a precedent that I don't think we want to follow. And personally, I really feel like this is an example of just moving the goalposts because certain council members are going to get their way. So I'm 100% opposed to this, and I, I think that this is a terrible precedent to be setting.
Thank you.
Manager?
Other question. So I respectfully disagree with that. No, no personal, personal. But as Mr. Raybo eloquently related tonight, thank you for your comments, Mr. Raybo. No other body that locally or statewide that we know of, according to his research, requires a super majority on their body to open an inquiry into something which the body feels is important to the residents, something that could be very costly to the residents now. Including, I think it was Act 51 of the state you mentioned?
No, House Rule 51.
House Rule 51, where the state itself does not require a super majority, but a simple majority. Now, I know a lot of people here are thinking that this issue has solely to do with the 911 discussions that we've had recently. I, I'm here to say unequivocally that I will always support, and at the end, I will support the best state-of-the-art radios and equipment for nine, nine, the 911 system and for our first responders. I will always support that at the end. Regarding that issue, the only concern some of us had was the cost of it. You know, is it worth six or seven million extra, or is it really worth three million extra? But at the end of the day, whatever that number is, I am supporting that issue. However, back to the inquiry on the floor, changing the administrative code. We have to think of years down the road, three years, five years, seven years, where when the majority of a council, a simple majority, feels that it's in the greatest and best interest of the public overall, they should have the ability to open an inquiry, in my opinion, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Perry?
Chair, I just, I couldn't agree with you more, John, what you said. And going back to, I could ask Mr. McKinley, who actually wrote it back in 2012, what the reasons were that he did write it.
Actually, our original ministry party wasn't John. This was changed by an amendment to ministry party back many years ago at this point. And the reason behind that was they wanted to make sure that there was enough support among the council members to authorize such an investigation. We had had a situation with 911, some questionable situations there. That was resolved through the NAPR. But the theory was that we needed to have strong support among the council, more than just a simple majority. And that's why that segment was changed and amended. Truthfully, that's, we've had a couple situations over the years where we've asked for that because we want to make sure there's enough solid support to do that. You know, as Mr. Raybo and some other people talked about, those are rules within their bodies. This body made this rule. And that's what we're working for. We're, as a body, make the rules that we abide by. And that's where this has come from, it came from previous situations, and that's why I have amended this one.
Thank you, Mr. McKinley.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
So I'm doing this for more than just one reason, for many reasons, because the next thing I would like to look into this county is children do. It's nice to sit here and speak, say something, how about doing something? Follow the people's pain, follow their problems, and do something about it. It's a lot easier to say yes, no, sit here, sit down, do something, find out why things happen. There's a lot of things going on in this county, we need to figure out why they happen. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, really quickly before we vote, I just want to say that I will not be supporting this, only because I do feel that there's a certain weight that an inquiry committee or an investigation committee carries, I do think a super majority, you know, is needed to support an inquiry or an investigation. I also want to echo what Mr. Lombardo said, I do agree that this is just being changed simply to get a 911 investigative committee. So we have a motion and a second, so we will have a roll call on this motion.
Mr. McKinley?
In support, this motion is to support it? No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
No.
Four no, six yes.
Motion passes. Number 13 is the item from the work session that got moved, so it's a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA funds for inspection of the water street bridge. We have a first and a second, then we can have a final one.
Second.
First, Mr. LaScavage, second, Mr. Lombardo. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Other question. The proposal of the Larson Design Group, as our solicitor said on a call earlier, was posted as of Friday last week under the work session items. And just going back to refresh everyone's memory, we discussed, this is not a convenience, this is, in my opinion, an issue of grave danger and safety. Anyone who's traveled in that area in the last eight, nine months since it was closed understands what I'm saying. So I want to tell everybody here, there is a great danger right now existing as we sit here and speak. And, and it's like this every single day at that lone bridge that's carrying all the traffic. That lone bridge is also trying to carry bicycles and pedestrians over it while there's 20,000 vehicles, including trucks, tractor trailers, every day, very dangerous. We entertained the idea of inspecting it with the hopes of opening it back in late January at our public meeting here. The proposal then on the floor was somewhere around 700 or 750,000, which there's no one in this room that wants that bridge open more than myself, and I couldn't see spending all that money to inspect that size bridge. And, and I have some experience in my past with the bridges and the engineering of the major infrastructure like that. So the proposal tonight on the floor is for their price tag of 289,843.07, just for the edification for everybody here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, we have a first and a second, can we have a roll call?
Sure.
As we know, since January, Mr. Thornton recited the fact that we have a different proposal. But there's been a lot of discussion, and the state has come in, Pendot has had meetings and offered some suggestions and what their plan is, and I believe their plan, if I'm correct, is to bundle those two bridges. And if the plan goes through as it seems to be, we would only be responsible for 5% of the cost, which is, the county, 5% is still a lot of money, but it's a heck of a lot better than trying to do it on your own. My biggest concern is with Pendot, if we do something like this and open that bridge, is that going to cause Pendot to have a problem with the bundling and the proposal, the plan that they put forth? I don't want to lose that opportunity. Have the state really, and the federal government pay most of that, and we're only on the hook for 5%.
Wait, I could answer that.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
On, on the calls that I was on with Pendot months ago for the county here, that question came up, you know, if it's open temporarily for, for, and it probably, probably would be for light duty, very light duty traffic, such as automobiles only. No, Pendot, after their inspections and their proposals, they only have eight proposals, alternate proposals, and one of them does not include that, what you, you mentioned. There is only, in their proposals, either the total rehab of the county-owned bridge or the total replacement of the county-owned bridge, that's it. A total rehab of the bridge is somewhere in the area of 22 million, and a replacement is less, it's a 20 or 21 million. So, no, they're not going to change or alter, alternate their plans, just if we just go get it open temporarily. Because at the end of the day, doing nothing leaves that bridge closed for seven more years, which is crippling for local economies on both sides of the river, not to mention all the dangers that exist now. So seven years is unfathomable, unthinkable. They said five years is the minimum time to get a shovel in the ground and start building a bridge. And then it takes at least two years to build a bridge, so we're looking at seven years, so, no, but they, they wouldn't change their plans, so.
Do we have that written, Mr. Thor?
I don't know if we have that written.
I'd like to just make a comment, I believe that the, at the, at the, the bridge meeting that we all had, that the public meeting in, at Wyoming Area High School a couple weeks ago, they did mention that. That, I don't remember them saying there would be any effect, the bridge was real to light traffic, they were actually looking to see if that was a possibility. And I agree with you, Mr. Thor, 100%, I mean, you know, personally, I've been trying to take a measured approach on this, being that four of us live in direct vicinity to the bridge, so it is nice that we're able to get that cost down for inspection from 750 to, to, you know, just under 300,000. And, and you're 100% right, seven years is way too long, the way it's destroying the economy in great extent, so we need to do something now, I'm happy to support this the way it is.
Great, thank you. Any other questions before we vote?
Chair, I'd like to thank the savager looking into and getting that first, thanks, Kevin.
Just a quick question to, Charlie, you don't see a problem with this as far as the sunshine act. The amendment is or not?
Yeah, I wasn't here in the January meeting, so I didn't know that it was discussed. I heard people discussing it recently. But I didn't hear it back then, whatever we published, then and on Friday, the public had noticed what we were taking.
Thank you, okay, there are first and a second, we have a roll call, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
I'm going to abstain only because of the amendment is not the amendment's stuff, I don't, it's not that I don't support it, it's just a question of legality.
Mr. Wulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes, I will support it, I would hope that we get some communication from Pendot in writing, so that we have some documentation in future, five to seven years from now, we want to know who will be a Pendot making decisions.
Rado? Yes. Right, yes. Motion passes, we're open for public comment on non-adjunct items, Mr. Raybo?
With respect to what was just said, as far as the transit, I agree, and I, as somebody who lives in Hazelton and fought for Hazelton buses for years, I think that, you know, it's, it's good that the buses in Hazelton are funded. I only had a problem with Carbon and Schoolville County not footing their fair share. But be that as it may, as far as the work session, I want to talk about the LSA infrastructure because this is a consternation that's been around since its introduction. My, my understanding as a redevelopment authority board member was that if there was no, if the council did not agree with the terms, then it would go back to the redevelopment authority, and the redevelopment authority would come up with another option. That's what I was told as a board member. Apparently, the same PowerPoint presentation that's on the website is basically the same thing that was talked about at the previous work session. So I just don't understand why the same thing is being perpetuated over and over again and being imposed on to the county for a third party, for you guys as a third party, to guarantee for other, you know, borrowers. I have never seen anybody or any entity agree you know, borrowers. I have never seen anybody or any entity agree or basically is forced to borrow money or basically guarantee on a loan for a borrower that they don't know what they're taking out the project for or whatever, you know, what the cost is overall. That's unheard of. So I would like to know why the lender FNCB is telling the RA that the county has to guarantee the loans to borrowers. And also, I would like to know, why is this being imposed on? Because as a board member, I know that the majority of the board who's closely aligned with the state senator who's leaving in six months is so insisting upon this. I mean, there was talk about the Nacero project that was bantered around in the newspaper and in the news media over the course of the last few months. But this is long, this is not only about Nacero, this is also about other infrastructure projects too that would be affected and impacted. So, and I did send to council also with respect to the fact that there's going to be, you know, with inflation prices and with the interest rates going up, the Federal Reserve is set on raising interest rates not once, but twice more from what the Federal Reserve chairman's saying, I'm finishing up. So that being said, I would not rush into this. I would work it out, council with the RA, with the lender and with the, with the state senator if he wants to. I think that needs to be hashed out. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
First lady, what I wanted to discuss is the procedural vote that we just had on the authorities boards of commission nominee. And I understand in the interest of speed and to get the agenda done, we're going to take one nominee and not vote on it, but your procedural, your, your bylaws clearly state you must vote on a candidate that's nominated to an authority board commission. You did not do that. You voted on putting the person in there. And I understand we only have one nominee, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the council would unanimously approve it or vote against that one nominee just because you have a nomination. So the, it's the sections 8F of our, of the council bylaws that says council shall hold the nomination period. After nominations are completed, council shall conduct a roll call vote in which each council member shall signify his or her selection by announcing a candidate's name. So you should clearly call for the vote. I'm sure it probably would have been unanimous, but I think in the interest of, you know, of speed, I think we did that. But I just want to make sure that the council follows the procedure in your bylaws accordingly. So we don't have an issue somewhere else down the road. The other concern that I have on the work session that's coming up is also the, oh, it's not on the work session. Let me just step out a minute. We just, the exit, the manager who just recently left, acting manager, was there an exit interview done of that person to be sure that we got all the county properties back as well as our HR policy says there must be an exit interview of anybody who leaves the county? Was that procedure in the county for Ms. Crocomo when she left? Also, in section 404 of the charter, it clearly states that if you are a county manager, you cannot go work for a vendor for one year after you leave the county. I understand that Ms. Crocomo went to Elliot Greenleaf and Dean, who received $2 million from the county over 10 years. Clearly a vendor of the county, clearly a violation of the charter, even though she is an acting county manager, she is county manager. I think council needs to address that as a charter violation, whether you sanction Elliot Greenleaf and Dean or you take appropriate action for the charter violation, something to consider for this council through your solicitor's office to find out if in fact you got to uphold that section of the charter and if the word acting county manager makes a difference as opposed to a county manager. Because we may be setting an issue in, in the front end that could be a concern. I mean, clearly, a county manager for nine months is not an acting, even though she was named acting, I think it's something to consider. The, let me see what my other notes are. The only other concern that I have is the issue with the, the agenda for the 55 million. I, I agree with Mark, Mr. Raybo about that. I don't think we should be guaranteeing any of that. That's a bond that's being taken out by the redevelopment authority for them, and the county should not be responsible to to secure that loan.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I'll address the second question. Mr. Thornton, I believe, sent the email asking about the exit interview. We forwarded it to the new acting county manager as well as HR, and HR was working on getting an answer regarding the exit interview back to council. So when we get that, we can copy you on it.
The exit interview should be done by council, not HR.
No.
HR, do it?
It's not my call. HR responds.
When we get a reply, we'll copy you on the email.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett from Pitts City?
Just one other thing, Mr. Griffin. He said we did nominate somebody at LCC. It's really not LCC. Was the Arts?
Yes.
No, I didn't say LCC. Yes.
Mr. Bassett?
Yes. Thank you.
Is that a message that you wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you. So I attended the election board adjudication today. My understanding is that the county council appoints the election board. That's why I'm speaking here. I had some concerns that I saw today that I wanted to make the board aware of. Today, they accepted ballots that had wrong dates, that had no dates, and they were about to accept ballots that were not sealed. And, you know, some of my concerns with that are, they said a lot about not disenfranchising voters. But I think the people who are disenfranchised by that are the ones who did it correctly and had their vote counted. Also, they had a kind of indifferent sort of attitude. They didn't meet a deadline. They, they did not finish the provisional counting today, and that is required to be finished today. And they discussed this openly. They, they they sort of laughed and said, well, what's the state going to do about it? We didn't finish. And, you know, in addition to that, they, you know, I, I'm waiting for a write-in count. They said that they count at a rate of about 400 per day. But Lackawanna County was able to count 2,300 votes in four hours. So I, my concerns are, you know, they don't seem to be too concerned about any deadlines, state mandated or otherwise. The, the accepting of ballots with no dates is concerning to me. And they also seem to rely on the suggestion of two people who are not on the board very heavily. My general impression was it, it seemed to be a confused atmosphere where it was difficult to follow what was going on and, you know, so those are just some of my concerns in general. I think, I think it's, you know, the, the unsealed ballot issue, it was not, it was tabled. But by their discussion, I, I expect them to vote to accept them, and that's very concerning. One board member did speak out against this. But the other four seemed to indicate that there was not a problem with accepting unsealed ballots. So that, yeah, those are just some concerns I wanted to raise. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your attention, Mr. Bassett. Also, I have a, I have an email that was asked to, it said, please read our objection at the public comment section. They didn't specify which one, so it just says, we strongly object to the proposed code change that would require six of 11 council votes, former and free committee. Council adopted code currently requires seven, a majority plus one for such an action. Please read this objection at the public comment section. Thank you. And it's by Mike and Debbie Smith, Alice from Dallas. Any other members in the public for public comment? Mr. Newman?
Yes. I'd like to comment on the discussion about the Hazelton transportation situation. There's a change coming. Hazelton is in the 116th Legislative District, and that has now moved into Schuylkill County. So maybe with a very good Senator Argyle, who represents Schuylkill County, might be able to get in on this discussion and perhaps do what can be done to link up Hazelton, Schuylkill County, and all of Luzerne County. Might be something worthwhile for somebody to reach out to the senator and to the new legislator, or state legislator. And I think if I'm reading the election correctly, that individual will come from Schuylkill County. So maybe there's an opportunity. Maybe it's something that should be looked at. It's quite frankly, I think Hazelton and this part of the county and add Schuylkill County, I think there's a possibility there that this could be done. And I've been hearing, I've come into a lot of meetings over a lot of years, right? And this seems like something that won't go away. So maybe there's an opportunity to hook it up. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Fitzgerald?
The, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Raybo said and Walter. Basically, I think what Mr. Scavages did today was really important. I think that's a new way of doing things that we actually think first and then jump. I think a lot of times council in the past used to jump first and just path of least resistance and it's the same old, same old as I've spoke before, and always hiring friends and local people. How many thousands, hundreds of thousands did you save by one phone call? You know, so ba- basically, we could do that with this banking institution. I'm a mortgage broker, I've been making over 20 years. And basically, you should shop around, and I understand PNC has it, and I think it's appalling that appears in a legislation said slide slows to you and sides, you know, solicit your, you know, his ways of thinking. The second thing is, if you don't mind, you just pass those around for whoever you invited. As you know, we're going to have a new county manager, and on January 15th, we're inviting the public, every one of you and anybody else that would like to come, we're going to have a welcoming party for him so we could show our support. Hopefully, things show a new direction and their invitation card. So if you want to invite friends, family, we're just going to come out, hopefully shake his hand, you know, let him know that he's welcome. We have support. There's a lot of change that we want in this county, and I think that's really important. As far as the ballots that was explained, I actually recorded what a seal is. And the definition of a seal is a device or substance to be used to join two things together so to prevent them from coming apart or to prevent anything from passing through them. Two, a piece of wax, lead, or other material with an individual design stamped into it, attached to a document to show that it came from the person who claims to have issued it. Tape is not. I used to be, I used to send 500 to 1,500 mailers a week when I'm in the mortgages. I used to solicit that way. And what we used to do is we used to seal it with the ink. I used to get a sponge and stamp it. Once in a while, we'd forget to put, instead of paying for another stamp, we'd heat it up and go like this with it. And we opened the package up. We broke the seal. And guess what we put on top of it? Piece of masking tape. That's what we have. We can have to get rid of the ballots that were submitted that don't have a seal. The Kings used to do it, put a wax, put the stamp on it. The Church used to do it. A seal is a seal. It's not a piece of tape that someone can open an envelope and reattach it with something that you do at Christmas presents. So I just want to say, I hope everybody attends on the 15th. It's at 5 o'clock, everybody. Call, you better be there. By the way, we can see on the TV, brother. It's good to see you. Everybody else.
This is outside?
Yes.
Any other members in the public? Hearing none. Do we have most?
Second, here.
All favor? Abstentions opposed. Meeting adjourned. It is 7:08. Let's start the work session at 7:15.
Good job.
You're hired here.
Yeah, you should be the county manager.
Guys, move your mic. Make sure we're watching the red. Guys, make sure we bunch the red.
Do I remember Texas or like?
So.
Make sure the green. Alright guys, mics are back on, we just need Mr. McGinnly and Mr. Thornton. Okay, it's 7:17, we'll call the work session to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance and had a moment of silence, we have a roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Rado?
Here.
Do we have any additions or relations from work session agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I respect your request, could I add something to the discussion, just discussion later, regarding our election protocols in the county? You could just add it. Whatever number you want, yeah.
Any other additions?
Oh yeah, number eight.
Oh yeah, so we have no eight, so. Anything else? Can we have a motion to adopt the work session agenda with the addition of 10?
Second.
Okay, we also move number six, if you guys don't mind, number six to the beginning, to number one. Senator, you can check it on, and the presentation is up, you guys mind if we do that first? Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt it with number six moved to one, and the discussion regarding the election? Yeah. Question, second, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is adopted, Senator, you can check if you want to start.
Thank you very much, Chairman Rado. Can everyone hear me, and everyone view the slide presentation? Let, let me begin by thanking you for the invitation to provide this information to you on the Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program. Secondly, let me thank the present members of Luzerne County Council and past members of the council and past commissioners, who I have served with over the last 24 years, 12 years in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, 12 years in the Pennsylvania State Senate. We've accomplished a great deal in Luzerne County, culminating with the last year, the announcement by the Governor's Action Team, which I'll reference later in the slide presentation, naming northeastern Pennsylvania as the number one job creator in all of Pennsylvania, beating out the greater Pittsburgh region, greater Philadelphia, central PA, northeastern Pennsylvania, for the first time in likely 150 years, was the number one job creator and the number one region in private investment and economic development projects. That is not achieved without Luzerne County, without the county council. So I want to thank you for your partnership over the years, and that's what I want to discuss tonight. The Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program, as you see in the first slide, is a partnership. It is a public-public partnership between Luzerne County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to put together $54.9 million in an infrastructure program to meet both county and municipal public infrastructure needs in Luzerne County. Going to the next slide, a little history on how this program came about. In previous councils and previous leaders in Luzerne County, we discussed this program and worked really hard with my colleagues in the Luzerne County Legislative Delegation, and we were able to pass Act 24 of 2021. That was unanimous support by both Republicans, Democrats, and independents in support of the Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program. Act 24 of 2021 requires the Commonwealth Financing Authority to automatically, before any other grants are distributed, automatically distribute $3 million a year for a period of 25 years for the purpose of funding debt service related to the construction, maintenance, and upgrades of public infrastructure projects in Luzerne County. Applications for projects will be approved through Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority and awarded by the CFA. Luzerne County and all Luzerne County municipalities are eligible applicants under this program. In December of 2021, the Redevelopment Authority advertised for an RFP for a bond or bank financing. In April of 2022, the RDA selected a joint proposal made by Fidelity Bank and FNCB Bank that would produce $54.9 million for Luzerne County construction projects. My understanding that representatives from Fidelity Bank are on the call today to answer any of the specific questions to the financing that you may have. The RDA did hire a consultant, they hired bond counsel, and between the RDA's legal counsel and the county's legal counsel, they vetted, vetted this program. If Luzerne County votes in the affirmative to guarantee the fidelity and FNC proposal with the full faith and credit of Luzerne County, $54 million, $54.9 million would be made available for county project. Failure to confirm the loan guarantee would result in doubling the cost of the loan and reduce the availability of funding for public infrastructure projects by nearly 50%. In looking at the needs throughout the county, as you well know, and this is information from your own engineering department, Luzerne County has over 100 miles of road, 14 county bridges. Combined, the present day cost for addressing county infrastructure needs is $121.7 million. Rich Roman, who is the Pendot District Engineer in 4O Region, notes that infrastructure projects go through three main phases, preliminary design, final design, and construction. And as Mr. Thornton mentioned earlier, this can be a very frustrating process when you're in partnership with, with Pendot. Mr. Roman estimates timeframe for a non-MPO transportation improvement project is generally six to nine years for completion, and the estimated timeframe for completion of an MPO TIP probe project is 10 to 12 years. With 5% construction inflation, which historically that had been the trend, actual cost for addressing Luzerne County roads and bridges within the next 10 years would exceed $182 million. Unfortunately, current in construction infiltration, inflation rate is 8%. So the actual cost of addressing Luzerne County roads and bridges could very well be over the next 10 years in excess of $200 million. Going to the next slide, the tale of two county bridges. I concur with council, west, the Water Street Bridge connecting Pittston and West Piston, we need to accelerate that project. That is causing a great deal of pain, not only to small businesses in the greater Pittston area, but certainly to motorists who are paying more at the gas pump and are, and are facing inflation in, in the grocery store, at the gas pump, and across the board. So the Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program would help accelerate, could potentially be the 5% match to this program, or accelerate any other inspections or engineering that would have to be done before Pendot would commence the bundling project. The West Nanticoke Bridge, very similar situation to Water Street. It was built in 1919 and was last rehabilitated in 1987. And most recently, the weight restriction was dropped to 15 tons. Unfortunately, unlike the Water Street Bridge, the West Nanticoke Bridge is located out of the design footprint of any state-owned bridge. The West Nanticoke Bridge then becomes the sole financial responsibility of Luzerne County, unless Luzerne County seeks to add the project to the Lackawanna Luzerne County MPO Transportation Improvement Program, which currently, currently has a list of projects in excess of $3.8 billion. I'll, I'll reiterate that. The current MPO project list is $3.8 billion, and generally takes 10 to 12 years to be completed. The current estimated bridge replacement cost for the, for the West Nanticoke Bridge is $40 million, representing the county's single largest infrastructure project. Deferring replacement on the, will at a conservative 5% construction inflation rate increase construction costs of the West Nanticoke Bridge to $64 million by 2034. The next slide gives you a snapshot of the last three years of applications to the LSA program. Over three-year period of time, Luzerne County municipalities demonstrated a need of more than $52 million in local public infrastructure projects, water and sewer, roads, and bridges. Combined, combined, the county and municipal public infrastructure needs currently exceeds $173 million. The vast, big-ticket infrastructure projects on the LSA list do not receive grant funding through the Luzerne County LSA. The Public Infrastructure Program, because of this unique period of time in where we have a federal infrastructure investment act for the first time in well over three decades, the Public Infrastructure Program would empower Luzerne County to leverage $1 billion in federal and state transportation funding. As you know, the funding model for federal and state projects is 80% federal, 15% state, and 5% local. Pennsylvania is expected to receive $11.3 billion in new highway funds and $1.6 billion in new bridge funding over the next five years from the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. A local match, a local match of $10 million can help complete a $200 million infrastructure project. So that means the $54.9 million in the Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program could help leverage $1 billion in road and bridge projects in Luzerne County. And the slide also indicates some of the major projects that we have in the county, the West Nanticoke Bridge, the Water Street Bridge, but also the I-81 and NSR 924 interchange in Greater Hazleton, the I-81 and NSR 93 interchange, again, in Greater Hazleton, the Sansui Parkway in Hanover Township, the crossroads at 309 and 315, and a, a road that I hear about quite a bit, Hillside in Huntsville, out in the Back Mountain. That's just to name a few of the major projects. What is the financial cost of doing nothing? The American Society of Civil Engineers estimates the failure to maintain roads and bridges costs the average American household $3,300 a year. That's another financial burden that we are placing on American households and, and households in northeastern Pennsylvania by deferring maintenance on our major infrastructure projects. Pendot data suggests that over the past few decades, construction inflation is averaging 5% a year, adding $2 million annually to a project if it is delayed. And of course, as noted, we are in a period of hyperinflation at 8% a year currently. Luzerne County's municipalities have established present-day infrastructure need of $173.7 million, if delayed. If delayed, these projects will increase in cost by $14 million a year, and ultimately cost Luzerne County taxpayers in excess of $317 million. From 1995 to 2020, construction, the construction inflation index increased 220%. If this rate of inflation continues, a $55 million project today could cost $121 million in 25 years. The public safety cost of doing nothing, the picture that you see is the Fern Hollow Bridge, built in 1973, just 49 years old, 50 years younger than both the Water Street and the West Nanticoke Street, the West Nanticoke Bridge. Fern Hollow Bridge collapsed in January of 2022, 10 people were injured, including many first responders. Three lawsuits have already been filed against the city of Pittsburgh, arguing the bridge collapse was preventable. The Fern Hollow Bridge was listed as being in poor condition in 2011 and last inspected in 2021. The bridge was constructed in 1973 for $1.2 million. Pendot is estimating that that bridge replacement will cost $25.3 million today. What do you get when you invest in infrastructure? Investing in infrastructure helps set the stage for job growth. One project that I've been very involved in, investing $90 million in the construction of the South Valley Parkway has already leveraged more than $1 billion in private investment and has helped us create more than 7,000 new jobs in the last five years in communities of Hanover Township, Nanticoke, and Newport. Luzerne County's partnership with the Commonwealth in investing in infrastructure like the South Valley Parkway and in advancing smart tax incentives like the state LERTA program has positioned northeastern Pennsylvania as the number one job creator in all of Pennsylvania. We should all be very proud of that, we have all contributed to that success. NEPA is number one in jobs created, number one in manufacturing jobs created over the last year, and number one in private investment and economic development projects. It should be noted, those communities that do not invest in their infrastructure generally lose jobs. Nationally, the American Society of Civil Engineers notes that a failure to invest in infrastructure will cost the United States to lose 3 million jobs by 2039. I know some questions were raised about the gaming industry. I wanted to highlight some important facts. Pennsylvania is home to 15 casinos that generated $4.83 billion in gross terminal revenue in 2021, supported over 33,000 jobs, and is ranked second, second most profitable gaming state, just behind Nevada. Our casino in Luzerne County, Mohegan Sun, with 873 employees, is the 13th-ranked casino in the entire nation with over $849 million in revenue in 2021. Mohegan Sun has averaged, averaged over $100 million annually in gross terminal slot revenue since gaming was fully implemented in Pennsylvania back in 2007. In 2021, Mohegan Sun slot revenue was $145.3 million, table revenue was $28.3 million, and iGaming was $31 million. Slots, table games, and iGaming all contribute tax revenue to the Luzerne County LSA. Luzerne County LSA has generated, on average, more than $10 million a year over the last 10 years. To the proposal from Fidelity and FNC Bank, option two in that proposal would generate $54.9 million in funds drawn over the first six years would yield $9.1 million per year, or the drawdown would yield nine point one million per year or the drawdown amount can vary based on the scope of work to comply with IRS regulations for tax-exempt financing. Banking fees and expenses are capped at no more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The annual debt payment for this loan would automatically be paid by the Luzerne County LSA in a worst-case scenario, which would mean the closure of Mohegan Sun. If Mohegan Sun is forced to close its stores in the next ten years, Luzerne County taxpayers would have saved thirty million dollars in debt service payments. If the casino closed in fifteen years, Luzerne County taxpayers will have saved forty-five million dollars. If the casino closes in twenty years, Luzerne County taxpayers will save sixty million dollars. While individual casinos across the country have closed or gone bankrupt, no gaming state has ever gotten out of the gaming business. If Mohegan Sun closed, Pennsylvania would be compelled to attract another casino operator to Luzerne County. It comes down to an affirmative or negative vote. And and what do those respective votes? What are those respective votes guaranteed? A yes vote empowers the county and its municipalities to address one hundred and seventy-three point seven million in pressing, long-deferred public infrastructure projects. It empowers the county over the next five years to leverage a billion dollars in new federal and state infrastructure funding. It empowers Luzerne County to continue to lead historic job growth in northeastern Pennsylvania, which created twenty-three hundred new jobs in twenty twenty-one and leveraged one point one billion dollars in private investment. And most importantly, most importantly, it empowers Luzerne County and its municipalities to ensure the highest levels of public safety on our roadways and bridges. A negative vote to not guarantee the loan will delay the replacement of aging county roads, putting public safety at risk. It allows the West Nanticoke, or excuse me, the uh, the Water Street Bridge to remain closed and puts the West Nanticoke Bridge at risk of being closed. Closures and traffic disruptions, as noted earlier in this meeting, put the public at risk and cost taxpayers in the pocketbook, three thousand three hundred dollars a year per household when you have traffic disruptions in the nature that we have in Water Street. A negative vote will force the full burden of a future potential two hundred and nineteen million dollar bond issue that the county would have to take out to address these pressing infrastructure needs, putting the taxpayers at risk at more for public infrastructure projects due to rising construction inflation and delayed action. And of course, a negative vote would put at risk Luzerne County's historic role as the region's economic catalyst, jeopardizing northeastern Pennsylvania's place as the number one job creator in all of Pennsylvania. I'm happy to answer any questions from council. Uh, and and again, uh, I want to thank you, I want to thank the team at uh, the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority, their legal team, uh, their uh, their consultants, their bond counsel, who have been very thorough in vetting this program. Uh, and I turn the floor back over to the chair and I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Senator. Council, do you have any questions? Mr. McGee.
Senator, I think you said if we don't pass this, we're going to lose like fifty percent of the monetary.
If if there is no guarantee to the loan, uh, whether it was this proposal or a bond issue or another bank proposal, the rates change, the amount of available funds change and the cost of uh, the product, be it a loan or a bond, would dramatically go up. So yes, we would greatly, uh, we would greatly diminish the power of this program without uh, the county's full backing of this loan product with the full faith and credit of the county.
And just so you realize that Senator, Luzerne County owns about three hundred bridges. I mean, we're small, but they're critical to the people who reside in there and have to use that bridge on a daily basis. So I, you know, we have major bridges across the state. They're very critical to those particular groups.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions, uh. Senator, thank you for your presentation. Very well done and appreciate you coming on tonight. This question may not be for Senator Udichak. I just was wondering, what what is the interest rate right now if county approved of this borrowing measure and the bond issue, what would be the interest rate on that debt?
Did you see somebody from the bank was on? They would probably.
And also, is it an APR rate? I imagine it's a fixed rate for a term of how long?
Mr. Thornton, I believe Ryan McGowan is on uh, the call from Fidelity Bank and could could answer that question.
Yes, thanks, Senator. Can can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, what I would, what I would say is I, I, I take back to the, to the proposal that we provided um, here in early February, um, for years one to ten, the uh, non-bank qualified fixed tax exempt rate financing that was proposed was three point two five percent for years eleven through twenty, that was three point six five percent. For years twenty-one through twenty-five, that was three point seven five percent. Now, what I will say is, um, you know, that is something that was provided in early February. We have seen some rate changes. Um, you know, there, there's probably going to be a little bit of a difference of a rate for, for a few reasons. One, um, until we look at structure and seeing how things will be drawn down from a fund standpoint, looking at what potentially could be taxable and tax exempt. It, it's difficult to say this is what the exact rate would be for, for the entire term. But, um, you know, we're, we're very confident we can provide the best solution for, for the authority and for the county, um, with, with, with minimal, you know, with minimal cost moving forward. So, um, you know, to, to, to really say today exactly this is what it's going to be, it's difficult. But it would be in and around where those numbers were at, which what we provided in our proposal in uh, early February. And that would be that, that those, as I think the question came up as far as fixed, those, those rates would be fixed for that, for that year, that time period. So years one to ten, eleven to twenty, twenty-one to twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, and also, uh, Mr. McGowan, I'm just looking at my own personal situation. My home equity line of credit that I've been using to do my own projects around my property, my rate was three and a quarter percent about two months ago. Now it's up to four and a half percent. So I imagine these rates back in February will be up probably another hundred basis points or, or even more. So I just trying to get my arms around it. And also, if council did not vote to guarantee the loan with the taxpayer money, what approximately, how much greater would the rate be from fidelity versus the rates that you stated back in February? And I know those wouldn't be the rates now, but back in February, had council not approved it and the loan went forward, what would, what would the difference in the rates be?
So, uh, good question and thank you, um, for asking. You know, I, I think from, from our standpoint, from fidelity and, and, and FNCB and they're not on the call, but I, I think it's, it's difficult for us to project a rate it, it without a guarantee. Um, I, I think when we look at the term that, um, you know, the, the projects are looking for in the financing, um, you know, it's difficult for us to say that we would be able to provide that financing for twenty-five years. If, if we were able to, I, I, I think you'd be looking at at least, you know, a doubling of, of, of the rates. You know, so, um, you know, I don't, I don't know if that answers your question the, in the best manner, but you know, there would, it would be, it would substantially increase the, the cost. Um, and, and the one thing I know you might, you touched on in your, um, your home equity line of credit, that, you know, sometimes we've seen, I think, uh, you know, prime has gone up, um, a, as we all know here. You know, when we look at, um, the differing of interest rates with, with different types of vehicles and, and different entities as far as from, you know, someone on an individual side to, to an organizational side or, or public entity side, there, there, there is some differences with rates um, that are be provided in, in, in that amount. And, and the general scope of the amount in, in and of itself obviously is, you know, significantly large here for, for projects that, you know, are, are going to be, uh, you know, potentially needed to be completed.
Yeah, I, I understand, Mr. McGowan. Thank you for that. Also, I just want to add, your, your comment a minute ago was interesting, as you said, when there's no guarantee behind the loan, the rates would probably be at least double. But we're hearing by, by every presentation I've heard, including the one tonight by Senator, that LSA money is guaranteed. I mean, it's gambling's here to stay, even if that casino closes. So, I mean, it seems like, you know, it is guaranteed money, but the bank is kind of holding out that it's not guaranteed money?
Well, I, I think it goes back to our discussion we had, uh, I think maybe about a month ago when we had presented in front of council. There was some questions that we had asked of the CFA and or the state. And, um, you know, as of yet, we were, haven't really been able to receive the, the, the comfort, you know, to know that if, if gambling were to go away, you know, where does, you know, where, where do we stand? Or where do we fall as far as from a payback procedure? Um, you know, I think you look at the revenue source as it is right now, yes, it, it's very solid. But, you know, as it goes out, you know, here in year ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, that was kind of the concern from both, um, you know, local banking, financial institutions.
And, uh, yeah, I had a couple of other observations, uh. You know, the one observation I made or I heard, and, and Senator Udichak in your presentation, I, I read it at length today during the day. And, and it, it's very well stated, it's just a couple of things that I think are, are, you know, low knock, but quite a stretch. Eight percent inflation is approximately what we have today. But if you look back from nineteen twenty-nine to two thousand and twenty-two, in those ninety-four years, we had eight percent inflation or greater in just ten years out of ninety-four. So the notion that we could possibly expect eight percent inflation for even the next five years is, is very, very remote and, and I don't think those numbers should be here and being entertained by council. They're just really not realistic.
That's, that's why Mr. Thornton, I provided the, the historical number of five percent inflation rate as well. I, I just wanted to reference because PennDOT had shared that with me. Uh, and they're, are facing not only the hyperinflation at eight percent, but you also have the situation where it's an eighteen-month lead time on steel. Uh, so there are supply chain issues, it's a very challenging time for, for PennDOT and, and for the construction industry. Uh, but you are correct, uh, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we had, uh, referenced what we are currently experiencing. But historically, uh, that construction inflation is around five percent, which is still significant when, when you look at how long these projects can be delayed. Uh, having worked on the South Valley Parkway, which, uh, was initiated in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, we didn't break ground to two thousand and eight. And so a twenty-seven million dollar project ended up being a ninety million dollar project. But that money was well spent, already leveraging a billion dollars and over seven thousand new jobs created. So, uh, yes, uh, I don't expect and I certainly pray, uh, for the sake of the country and the county that we do not have eight percent, uh, in, inflation going forward. But I did have to reference that that is currently what PennDOT is facing today.
Yeah, and, and just thank you for that, Senator. I, I just have two more questions.
Sure.
Most financial analysts in the country, even our own economic advisors in the White House, they're placing a, a much higher percentage on the fact that we'll soon be entering a recession rather than going the other way. Uh, that's the most likely outcome right now. So that's scary, yeah, because you know, with the recession, there's people, people are really suffering and hurting on the other end. But Senator, uh, you probably remember back when I, I was on the council of the local municipality in the county, we borrowed, uh, ten million dollars from PennVest from the state to do infrastructure work. Uh, is PennVest borrowing available to the Redevelopment Authority?
Uh, PennVest is, is a great program, uh, municipalities, uh, are, are available. Uh, they are, they have availability of those funds in, in addition to, uh, authorities. I, I would have to confirm that the Redevelopment Authority, but I know Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, the Hazelton City Authority, uh, all of those authorities have taken advantage of, uh, the great PennVest program. That, that is primarily for, for water and sewer projects.
Right, yeah, and I bring that up because at the time, we were looking for the ten million from everywhere we could possibly look. And I know all of the local banks, uh, were around a three to four percent range to borrow the money. But PennVest came in at one and a quarter percent, uh, for the majority of the borrowing years and then it went up to two and a half after. So I'm just wondering if that, that's a possibility.
And that's a, and that's a great point, uh, Mr. Thornton. You are going to be able to blend, uh, the, the funding from this Public Infrastructure Program with PennVest and with other programs, uh, that, uh, you know, I mentioned leveraging a billion dollars in, in infrastructure work over the next five years and, and leveraging those federal dollars, those new federal, uh, transportation dollars. But PennVest, you also have the, uh, the PIB program, which many municipalities use, uh, to do roads. Uh, there were other programs in the Commonwealth, having the ability to make the match where a match is required. Uh, the, the, uh, redevelopment assistance program requires a match. Many, many multimodal grants require a match. That's the, that's the value of this infrastructure program. You would be able to leverage several pots of funding, both at the state and federal level uh, to further your dollar, if you will, further, uh, these resources to minimize, to minimize and diminish the exposure to Luzerne County taxpayers.
And, and one last question, I'm sorry to keep asking. Great point you make in the presentation that Pennsylvania is expected to receive over eleven billion dollars in the, uh, federal infrastructure investment, uh, Jobs Act money. And you, and, and you're right, that is expected over the next five years. So, uh, you know, with given sixty-seven counties in the Commonwealth, you know, Luzerne County should stand to receive maybe two hundred million dollars approximately, maybe plus or minus something there. Um, that's over the next five years. I, I see the value in holding off and waiting on borrowing this fifty-five million. If indeed that's true and we're going to be receiving two hundred million for infrastructure soon.
Well, you, you, the federal dollars, you'd be required to make the match. Uh, I, I can't speak to your general fund budget of whether you would be able, uh, to match every project, every one of those bridges, every one of those roads. Uh, I, I suspect that your general fund budget would not be able to meet that match requirements. That's the value of the program, that you would have those resources to do that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Senator.
It was, uh, publicly stated, uh, at a previous meeting that a competitive bank or PNC didn't require guarantee. I mean, I, in my opinion, what would really hurt the council to kick this back to the RA to tell them to go out and negotiate with other banks that won't require the guarantee versus the two banks that, that we're talking with right now on the line? You know, Mr. Riley did come in and state that, that PNC did entertain discussion. Uh, I think Mr. Grable also, he's a member of the RA Board, and, and basically said PNC didn't require a guarantee. So why would we be entertained borrowing from, uh, uh, two banks that are going to require a guarantee when there are other banks out there that may propose that their, that county doesn't have to back it? And I, I see how the act is written and, you know, the way it's, uh, you know, county redevelopment under E one, this act, uh, nothing in here stating directly about Luzerne County. It's just about the classification of the county, uh, and, and a home rule county of the third class shall be eligible to receive grant funding upon notification to the Department of Economic and, or Department of Community and Development of the issuance of debt, receive the sum of three million annually for a period of twenty-five years, the purpose of funding debt service related to construction, maintenance upgrades and public infrastructure proj- projects located within the county. Uh, projects funded from proceeds of the debt issuance by a county redevelopment authority under paragraph one and, uh, section two shall be made through an application to the county redevelopment authority and subject to the approval of the CFA, which is Commonwealth Financing Authority. How do we know, based on who's in that governor's office in the next, you know, six terms, that the CFA is also going to? that the CFA is also going to, you know, approve these projects going forward? I mean, there is no guarantee.
There, it is required by law, by statute, not to be changed by the governor or the General Assembly, that Luzerne County, and and that is the only county under that language that is eligible for the three million dollars, will come off the top before any other grants are awarded through the LSA. Annually, three million dollars would be sent to the Luzerne County RDA for that debt service. So, and to your point on PNC, it's my understanding that all the institutions that responded to the RFP in some form would require a guarantee or dramatically change the program. As I mentioned earlier, yes, we can proceed without the full faith and credit of the county. That will likely double the cost and reduce the amount of available funding by fifty percent. And I I don't think that's a wise option to increase the cost of the program and diminish the amount of funding that would be available. But the CFA required by state law would drive out three million dollars a year once the debt has been issued by the RDA, and that would continue for the next twenty-five years.
Okay, so is this language written? I mean, I know Erie County is a home rule county. They're a third class. They have a casino and racetrack as well. Would they not qualify for this same language?
No, it is only Luzerne County qualifies under that language.
I mean, they are a third, third class county, and they're home rule though.
But I'll be happy to have one of the attorneys from the Commonwealth speak to you. That language is specific to only one county, Luzerne County.
Yeah, I don't see Luzerne listed in the act at all. That's.
It is. It's not. It's it's not how legislation is drafted. The county is not spelled out. It's it's reference to its class, also to the class of the casino. And so that language is specific to one county, Luzerne County.
Thank you, Mr. Muscavage.
Mr. Udichak, thank you for your presentation. My only question is, how did we arrive at three million out of the ten million that the county receives? Like, how do we come upon that number? Why couldn't it have been seven and or five out of ten?
Mr. Muscav, we we've done one other program that that I think you and Mr. Thornton are very familiar with. After the twenty-eleven flooding that hit Luzerne County, particularly hitting West Pittston, we did the Luzerne County Small Business Loan Program, and and we were able to secure four million dollars in LSA funding for that revolving loan program. And thanks to Luzerne County and its partners, that program has put over eight million dollars into small businesses in Luzerne County. It it comes down to what you were able to secure in the negotiations. And three million dollars was the number that still allows municipalities and the county to access what generally is another seven million dollars. We were successful. If you remember, we we were not allowed to make applications through the RDA in the original act. Applications only went through municipalities. So we were able to to make the county a full partner in the LSA by allowing the RDA to be a vehicle for applications. So three million was the number that we were able to settle on through the negotiations. That still allowed money for, you know, many other worthwhile projects in the county and the municipalities. But clearly, over the time, since the inception of the casino industry in Pennsylvania, if you look at the LSA, it's probably raised more than a hundred and twenty million dollars for Luzerne County. Not many large regional major infrastructure projects were completed with LSA dollars. They generally go to the midsize or smaller projects. So the thought of the Luzerne County Public Infrastructure Program was to help the county and help municipalities tackle some of those larger projects, Water Street Bridge, West Nanticoke Street Bridge, that simply could not be accomplished any other way outside of a bond issue that would be the full responsibility of the county. As I mentioned, this is a way for the county to partner with the RDA. You appoint the members of the RDA, you're full partners with the RDA, and to partner with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to come up with a creative way to leverage more state and federal dollars, whether they're transportation dollars from Washington DC, whether they're PennVest dollars on water and sewer projects, to find a creative way to empower Luzerne County to take advantage of of these new federal and state dollars so that we can do more public infrastructure projects. Projects that, as as in the case of the West Nanticoke Bridge, it it simply would be too large to tackle for the county. That project, if that bridge closes, as Water Street is closed, in cutting off those two arteries to the Back Mountain, to the Greater Nanticoke area, to Pittston, West Pittston, we will be inflicting a great deal of pain on the pocketbooks of of taxpayers in Luzerne County if we continue to defer the maintenance on these bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Willow.
I have a quick question. If the county does sign on to this, what kind of say what the county has, which roads and bridges get taken care of? Mr. Gimli said there's over a hundred bridges, a hundred and one miles.
Three hundred.
I'm sorry, three hundred, way over a hundred bridges. But who decides at the end of the day which of those bridges and roads get funded?
The the county threw an application, and I would encourage the county to put a robust application into the redevelopment authority. The redevelopment authority, by a vote of the redevelopment authority, would then proceed to forward projects that they approve, that they believe are worthwhile projects for Luzerne County, to the CFA for final approval, and the projects will receive the grant funding. That is the process that was established under the law, and that is currently the process under the LSA. We didn't want to get too far afield from the process that has been in place for more than a decade. So the county would be able, as an applicant, to put in a list of roads and bridges or 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 any other public infrastructure projects that they need and have that application forwarded to the redevelopment authority. We would vote and approve that application, and the CFA would make the final decision. That way, we have a a very transparent process, a great deal of accountability to the process in that you have the RDA vote and then the CFA vote to do the project.
Yeah, I'm very concerned with the transparency, and I mean, that's always been an issue, seems to be at Luzerne County. Some people, the first people that come to is council when they ask questions. I can go on the redevelopment authority, I can go on the center. Say, well, these are county roads. What are you doing? I appreciate it.
Understand.
Mr. Urban.
This this question goes to the to the banks, too. Are there any penalties regarding this loan?
What what we put in our proposal states that during the first seven years, the borrower would have a two percent pre-penalty payment assessed if they were to refinance the the loan with another financial institution. After the seven-year period, prepayment is allowed at any time without penalty.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Yeah, just I'm just thinking out loud, two percent penalty of fifty million? I mean, is that one million? Okay, and secondly, I just brainstorming here out loud. So let's say council didn't go, did not go forward with approving this, putting the taxpayer money behind the loan. And a year or two from now, the infrastructure money comes to the county, say, in four increments of fifty million each, two hundred million, fifty million each, maybe over three or four years, I don't know. Would it be wise for the county at that point for the redevelopment authority saying, hey, we really want to get, use this fifty million for projects we have in mind, but we need a ten percent match, which would be five million from us? Wouldn't it be wiser for us to borrow that five million at that time to match the fifty million infrastructure money rather than borrowing fifty-five million now? Because that's a, that's a real big number. I'm just brainstorming out loud, that's all.
The the problem with that scenario, Mr. Thornton, the if the county does not back the program, if the program does not go forward, if the RDA has to reassess whether or not it is worthwhile at double the cost, at fifty percent less money, you you may have a situation where then the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania could potentially change the law and say Luzerne County rejected the program, they were not interested in the program. Perhaps there's a better use for that three million dollars, and and there would be another discussion. With an affirmative vote of the council, with the affirmative vote that has already been made by a majority of the RDA, you would lock down this program for the next twenty-five years. You would ensure that that statute couldn't be changed. You could ensure that those dollars would be made available. And I wanted to mention earlier, I think it's an important point, and it was a wise decision by the RDA. They, the the RDA could have chosen to do a bond issue. The the challenge with bond issue is for tax exempt status, you would have had to spend all of that money in thirty-six months. Clearly, the bank proposal gives you the flexibility to what you're talking to now, Mr. Thornton, in that you have a little more flexibility. But my concern is Luzerne County needs to lock down this program. We can certainly do our due diligence on the best project, and that'll be debated by county council and chosen by county council. You will make the decision on on what projects you want to make an application for. But a a negative vote, I think, seriously puts in question whether the program will be received by Luzerne County.
The only concern I have with that is, and if that's the case, so be it. So the LSA program is kind of holding the position that if the county doesn't borrow a big amount of money, we're not willing possibly to give you the three billion a year?
No, no, that 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 was not, not my intention. The LSA is not forcing anything on the county. This is a joint discussion, County Redevelopment Authority and County Council. Legislature took action, developed a program that could create nearly fifty-five million dollars for infrastructure projects in the county. Lending institutions, and it's my frustration as well as yours, Mr. Thornton, I always like to say, I don't have the burden of legal education. Lawyers want assurances, and any product that we would have gone with would require an assurance, even if it's a scenario that is improbable as the shutting down of the Pennsylvania gaming industry. It is not probable. It is not going to happen. But that's what lawyers do for a living. They want to make sure that every scenario is planned for. That's why there is a requirement for the guarantee of the loan. And as I mentioned in my presentation, if you go through the worst-case scenarios, there is a tremendous opportunity to save thirty, forty, fifty million dollars in terms of taxpayer money in Luzerne County, having that debt service paid by the LSA. In in my concern, however, if there's a rejection by the county, then we're going to have to reassess the program. I, my legislative colleagues, recognizing the tremendous needs in the county, thinking of the Water Street Bridge, and at the time of the passage of this act, you know, we weren't anticipating that it potentially could be bundled with PennDOT and and would only require a five percent match. That doesn't seem likely in talking to the PennDOT engineers on West Nanticoke Street, or excuse me, the West Nanticoke Bridge. That would be the full responsibility of the county. And quite frankly, if you needed to act quickly to get that done because of a public safety issue, the county taking that on alone through this program would be much quicker than getting it on to the MPO, which could take ten to twelve to twenty years, and all adding to increased costs on the backs of the taxpayers. I think we have a unique opportunity. Luzerne County will be the only county in Pennsylvania, the only county in Pennsylvania that would have access to its own public infrastructure program to use as a match to other state and federal programs. So we have an opportunity to leverage a billion dollars for our infrastructure projects in Luzerne County. I I certainly expect the county to do its due diligence. That's why I've come here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, to get anybody on the phone, whether it's the bank, whether it's CFA or anyone else, to help answer any of your questions, to give you the best information available to me so you can make an informed decision on 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 the loan guarantee.
Finally, thank you for all that. I appreciate it. I I probably probably would be in favor of this measure if, two things. If the the redevelopment authority could seek first PennVest funding, maybe it's available, maybe it's not. And if it is, it's probably at a much lower interest rate. Secondly, I would, I would like to see some kind of clause in the written agreement between county council and the redevelopment authority, giving county council authority to approve or disapprove the projects which the development authority is going to go forward with.
Sure. I don't think Mr. Riley's on right now, but that's something we can communicate.
Right, right. Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Sure. I do just want to address, just to be clear, PennVest money would not be able to do road and bridge. That would only be able to do water and sewer work.
Senator, one of the problems that we've had over the years, and I really feel it's been, the county's been neglected. We never really had an opportunity to apply for the LSA money. The municipalities were able to get their projects approved, but we, as a county, is not able to do that. I think we've got a small grant, you know, the retunda was moved out. This bothers me for many years that LSA sort of kept us out of the picture. The second part is, I agree with Mr. Thornton. We should have, the county should have, the county council should have some kind of influence in regards to anything that would be approved as an infrastructure project. I mean, that's very important. Now, if we're going to guarantee money, a great sum of money, I think it's important that we have a say in how things work out. The other thing, I want to say this publicly because some people are sort of new, some people may be aware. And we started with a debt in two thousand and twelve, four hundred and sixty-five million dollars. We reduced that dramatically over the course of ten-plus years. To take on this amount of money as a guarantee obscures any of it. So it's real important that we get all the assurances and guarantees and whatever for the county so we don't end up with a debt service that's going to drive the budget right out through the roof. I really think that's important. I would hope that everybody considers that in their thought process and thinking so that we come up with some good, solid information, procedures, approvals, et cetera, so that the whole program works appropriately and not for one or two issues, because somebody has some kind of influence that wants to do that. Don't forget what it does to the taxpayers. That's why I just talked.
Matt, manager. I was hoping I could make one point to this discussion if you and Mr. Swens will allow to influence this discussion, some information.
Yeah, because we have, we saw nine or ten items.
Just take one minute. I'm Matt Jones, I'm the planning director. I just wanted to make one quick comment that just, I have no opinion about this one way or another. This is a fantastic discussion tonight. I just wanted to provide some information to make the most informed decision possible. Something that's developed over the last few weeks. Mr. Dujicak mentioned that eleven billion dollars is coming from the bipartisan infrastructure bill to 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 Pennsylvania. There's some several dozen counties that are going to be splitting up that money. The calculation is at roughly two hundred million, Mr. Thornton mentioned, might come to Luzerne County below. Mr. Dujicak also mentioned that the county roadway repairability or repair liability is valued at roughly one hundred eighty-two million to two hundred million dollars. They're pretty close figures. And you made the point, sir, we've got all this federal money coming our way, maybe it might be prudent to wait and see. Which makes sense. But I wanted to just mention that something we're finding, you know, each each roadway has a different color. It's federally owned, and that's their responsibility, the feds, to repair our interstates. Many of our roads in the county happen to be state-owned. They're PennDOT's responsibility, and PennDOT uses state and federal. They're PennDOT's responsibility, and PennDOT uses state and federal money to repair those roadways. The county-owned network is its own separate roadway network with its, it's our, it's our liability and maintenance responsibility. We are finding, just as we learn more about the bipartisan infrastructure bill over the last few weeks, that the line is, it's, I feel compelled, I have to tell you, we're finding that the lion's share of that funding is going to go towards fixing these state and federal roads. A smaller portion of that will, the county be eligible for it to apply to get. And so I just want you to, I just want to flavor our expectations about what that bill might bring to Loser County and help us with our, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Senator, one last question. I know you said the Nanticoke Bridge is about forty-four million. Would that be the full cost out of the fifty-five million? Or is that, we'd just be paying a match for that?
No, the county, the information I have from the county is the current present-day cost of replacement of the West Nanticoke Bridge is forty million dollars. That's today, and then you-
Would that be, if we replace it, would that be out of the fifty-five million, forty million out of fifty-five million?
That would be a decision of county council of whether that is the single project that they would want to complete. Since that, at, at the moment, would be the sole financial responsibility. You do not have a situation like the Water Street Bridge where you were going to bundle that with the Fort Jenkins Bridge and reduce the cost to the county to five percent of the project. As it stands today, a hundred percent of the cost of replacement of the West Nanticoke Bridge would be the burden of Loser County taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Just quickly, just for the record, Mr. Swetson, what year are we retiring with debt? Year twenty twenty-nine?
There's a little bit twenty-third, most of it is twenty-twenty-nine. There's a small pain with a few million, which in retrospect, two hundred and eight.
Right, there's twenty-six million a year, correct?
Correct.
I mean, you know, in a few short years, we'll be, we will be retiring a lot of debt in this county. I just can't stomach or, or at least, you know, vote to approve paying banks twenty million dollars in fees for fifty-five million dollars of upfront money. That's more than, that's worse than loan sharking. But, you know, quite honestly, you know, I know the county's really not going to have much of a say in what roads or bridges get done. And I honestly think we probably should have this discussion too when new manager comes into, into playing this county. I think we need to bring the RA in. I think we, we have to have a committee meeting or a subcommittee meeting with some of the people on this council with the RA and try to hash this all out because this is going to be a linear discussion tonight. Just to do our due diligence financially, looking at the bank fees, understanding the language in the contracts. But I, I, you know, on the surface, I can't just, you know, I know these are two local banks. There are many, many hundreds of banks out there that may not require the guarantee, knowing that the legislation is already passed, signed at the state level. And if it's just tailored for us through the language, whatever it may be, there may be some banks out there that may not require a guarantee from, from Loser County as an entity, and just the RA, because they can incur their own debt. And if these projects are that good, then the funding should go through the RA and they can pick on the, the debt itself and the payment of that debt.
Miss, Chairman? Just, I, I just wanted to clarify, there are no twenty million dollars in fees in this proposal. That's interest payments. Fees are capped at no more than two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The RDA did two, advertised two RFPs, and in, in both of those rounds, of those requests for proposal, the banks and, and the bond companies, all of those that replied to that advertisement in some form or fashion would require some kind of guarantee of this product. And to my understanding, the RDA certainly does not have the taxing authority or power of the county. So they would not be in a position to guarantee the loan on it, on its own.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chair, it's, from my past experience, it's quite common for banking institutions, when they're loaning money to governments, government bodies, that the banking institution pays the borrowing cost upfront themselves rather than the government body. So I would like to see that clause incorporated in this agreement, whatever we're going to vote on in the future, that the borrowing cost be absorbed by the banking institution.
Sure. Mr. Thornton, if you could just send an email with that clause, the other one that you suggested, and I think there was the other, to add counsel to have approval with the redevelopment board. So if you want to send those three to an email, we'll see what we can do about it.
Yeah, okay.
Just so we don't- Senator Udichak, Mr. McGowan, thank you both so much for being on and answering our questions. We appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the, the budget reports for April twenty-third, Joe.
So the budget report will be very quick. I'm just going to have one thing, as always, I'll take any question, email it, morning. But page four of both the agenda and the packet, the real estate for the current month, I know we talked about before that tax goes out later, we're currently looking at them, we're looking at them in the past. Thirty-eight point six million came in this last month. So we're still looking at it, it's still a concern, but as we said at the last meeting, two meetings ago, the last time I presented, that it would come in, it was more than time. Two other things that I'd like to get on the budget and finance reports going forward, because they're brought around by the public council and some other groups. One is the, for things that already went out. So we, this council approved money for IT in the prison. I'd like to do an update in my stuff, I don't have it today, but I'd like to do a budget finance, I work with Mr. Robson to get that done. I don't have an issue with that. And the second one was an update on the assigned slash spent, you know, the lost revenue. So we always hear about, that's a calculation, and I can share the calculation, I think I already did. But that eight point nine million, some of the decisions we made today in the past meetings, even though we didn't write the check, you know, my thought and budget finance thought is that it is lost revenue. I know it's for future discussion because council wanted to wait for an answer, which I totally understood. But I really think the county is a consultant, again, not for tonight, I think for a future meeting. So we'll put something together that says this is eight point nine, and this is what we think is coming out of the lost revenue. So council's aware of what's available. So we'll have that for everybody, the finance report for a second meeting. Anything you guys have to email, you can do that. And we're moving forward on the audit, the audit committee met. I'll let them discuss kind of later if they want to, but we met, we're moving forward on that, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swetson. Items number two and three are both regarding litigation. First, we have Nancy Hunter of Loser County, then Lori Hughes of Loser County, as well as Wolfborough City. Those were discussed both in executive session prior to the voting session. Number four, discussion regarding resolutions, has been made to the county manager, director of operations, and/or the county engineers, authorized signatories for execution of agreements, documents, notices, required exhibits of the management of projects through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, electronic systems for dock grants.
Uh, Mr. Flash will admit at that, if he wants to talk about it. Honestly, as I said before, you know, the plan is for Mr. Robson to be here next time. So, county manager won't involve me, but Mr. Flash wants to speak about it. If you have any questions, if not, because obviously you know Mr. Flash.
Okay. Mr. Flash, do you want to speak on it, or?
Sure.
Okay, just briefly.
Pretty simple request, it's something you have in the ordinary. It's just that the dock grant system that get the grants through for the airport is kind of tentative. It's critical, there's some generic forms that have to be signed all the time to get a grant. And it's come to someone, sometimes just sending it to the manager, where it's not an agreement, it's just a form we can be signed. We'd like the option to have the director of operations and/or the county engineer handle the dock grant. It's something we're basically just executing a couple of the forms, but the overall agreement would be signed by the county manager. Just as, it's like tracking system, it's just easier to have more than one day mine with all the transition that we've gone through over the last, uh, time. It's a simpler solution to have someone else who's involved directly with the grant. They help with filling out the extra forms and that kind of stuff. That's all, recent.
Thank you, Mr. Flash. We have a discussion regarding ordinance to many Loser County zoning map to resolve reparts of property totaling twelve point nine five acres of used work township from MI Mining District Zone to R two, two-family residence district zone. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones regarding that? Okay, we'll move on to number seven. Discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute lease documents for district attorney auto theft task force vehicle, I believe, district attorney, Sandra O'J is on. Does anybody have any questions regarding number seven?
Single vehicle. Okay.
Attorney Sandra O'J, is it one vehicle?
Yes, it's one vehicle, it's fully paid for by the auto theft task force money.
Great, thank you. Number eight, we moved over to voting session. So number nine, discussion regarding resolution to adopt proposed amendment to the Articles of incorporation for Loser County Transportation Authority to increase its term of existence to a date not exceeding fifty years from the date of approval of the Articles of Amendment and to take any and all other actions related thereto. Any questions regarding that? Okay, so then the last thing that we have is the addition by Mr. Thornton of the discussion regarding elections.
No, no.
Sorry. Sorry. Discussion regarding the Tony real estate purchase packet. Mr. German, did you want to talk about it?
Yes, so we had this at our real estate committee meeting last Monday. We recommended it to council to approve it. Mrs. Sally Tony lives just a few streets over, right off of East Lee Street. And she has a lot right next to her that she thought was hers, but it's not. But that she brought back to use to park in the winter time. She said that it's hard for her to get up the hill, so she wants to be able to use it and to park there. She has some flowers to meet. It's closer to her house than having to drive up the hill. And she, she would up the porch that way.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. German? If you're okay, we'll move on then. I'm sorry, I didn't know that's gonna happen. Okay, so now we have number eleven, discussion regarding elections. Mr. Thornton, did you want to start that discussion?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the floor. Just, I have some comments, and then I want to finish up with a proposed declaration or proclamation that we could consider at the next voting meeting. I attended, so did several council members here, the last two or three election board meetings in this room. And every meeting involved issues surrounding illegal activity and fraudulent voting at the drop boxes in the county. And it's, it's not an issue that's going to go away. As a matter of fact, I feel it's going to get worse and worse regardless of how much public education we provide. It doesn't matter how many surveillance cameras we have at these sites, really, who's going to honestly review many hundreds of hours of surveillance footage? Individuals in the county happened to eyewitness the illegal activity of dropping multiple ballots in a box. Now, tonight we hear of the mail-in ballots. Some are not sealed, some are not signed. That's not for me to decide what to accept, what not to accept. My point is, these are not just issues of Loser County, they're issues in every single county in the Commonwealth. And I want to take you back because these issues are unnecessary. For over two hundred years, we voted in this country in person or more recent decades absentee ballot, which have worked terrific, no problem. And I, I want to remind everybody, a hundred and fifty years ago, people had a board, their little backboard wagon with the horses in front, and sometimes travel four or five hours or overnight just to go vote. Whereas in the last fifty, sixty years, all you'd have to do is walk down the street now, go in your local firehouse or church or wherever, and vote. Very easy, very simple. So I want to make a point that we're all currently embroiled in this Senate election, United States Senator. And it's a very, very important election. The ramifications are huge for the rest of America. And the spotlight and focus is on Pennsylvania. And it's a very bad spotlight, very negative focus on Pennsylvania. The word around the country is, we just can't get it right. No matter what we do in this state, it's always wrong around the election process. We currently have two senators, a week later, it's still not decided. And whenever they decide, there's going to be lawsuits and counter lawsuits and appeals. There's going to be recounts. And I want to remind everybody that the difference between the two votes is about a thousand votes or less in the whole state. So keep that thousand vote figure in your head while I explain this. We had five drop boxes in this county this past election last week. We witnessed several incidents of people dropping multiple ballots in the boxes. Some of them walked out, some of them tore them up, threw them in garbage cans, whatever. But if there's just five, let's say over the three-week period, drop boxes were laying there, if there was twenty illegal ballots dropped, multiple ballots, twenty, over the whole three-week period in a drop box, and we got five boxes, that's a hundred ballots that were dropped illegally that we don't know about. Now that's, I say at a minimum, I say it's much more than that. But at a minimum, it's a hundred in this county. There are sixty-seven counties. If the same thing is going on in all the counties, that's six thousand and seven hundred ballots that should not have been dropped in the manner they were. And we have a US Senate election that differs by one thousand votes. So think of that. I want to also take you back to two years ago, and, and Mr. Griffin and I had this discussion recently where one woman in the state of Pennsylvania, Kathy Bookmark, one woman, not elected, she was appointed by Governor Wolf to be the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And one woman alone, unilaterally, came up with the idea, I decided we're going to have drop boxes all through Pennsylvania. There's no law, there's no legislature behind it, no legislation behind it. And she decided as Secretary of the Commonwealth, and it might have been a good idea because it was at the start of the COVID pandemic two years ago. And it was immediately challenged by the legislature of the state of PA. And the judges who sat at the Supreme Court in the state of PA voted straight down party lines. It was a partisan ruling to approve, and their opinion of the court was to let her go forward with her drop boxes. Again, that's an opinion and a ruling of the court. It's not a law, because as we all know, judges can't make laws. They are the judicial branch, cannot make a law. They approved what she was doing. So there we have it. It was never an election law, yet our election board continues to employ something that's not a law. Okay, it was a partisan five to two vote by the Supreme Court, five Democrats, two Republicans. Okay, should not have been, or four-three, or whatever it is, okay? But it was a partisan vote. Anyway, I say the time has come now that, as a county body, we should be weighing in on this. The county residents, I feel, have a right to know where every county council member up here stands on these issues. They have a right to know where their county councilman stands. So I would hope in two weeks, we could have on a voting agenda, a proclamation or declaration, whatever you want to call it, that would read, it's very short, would read something like this, and I would hope if it passes, I don't know if it will, that we forward that and send that off to Governor Wolf's office, the Majority Leader of the State Senate, the Majority Leader of the state representatives, including all of our local state reps in this county, including the state senators in this county. The proclamation would read like this, whereas electoral integrity is essential to the functioning of a constitutional republic. And whereas the move to mail-in and drop box voting in Pennsylvania has seriously undermined the integrity of our electoral process, we, the members of Loser County Council, of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, do hereby demand that the Pennsylvania State Legislature immediately return the Commonwealth to in-person voting on Election Day with photo identification, proof of US citizenship, and state residency, and hard copied paper ballots, with the exceptions as noted in the Pennsylvania Election Code prior to Act Seventy-Seven, period. And I hope we can put that on the agenda, and if anybody wants that comment, feel free.
If you can send that, that language to the county council as well as the House of Lords, we have a vote.
Will do, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Just to go off the election agenda and just receive some word in the county email that Deputy Director of Elections resigned as of, she resigned June third. She sent out that resignation to a bunch of board members and county employees at five twenty this afternoon. While we were in executive session, Mr. Swetson- We were in executive session. Mr. Swett's unfortunately were not emailed.
Thanks for telling me. I, if I could please, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, I was inspired by this email from a county resident who sent that to me over the weekend. So I'm sorry, I couldn't put it on Friday's agenda for tonight. David Kapasinski of Hazel Township. So I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kapasinski, for that email.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Just one question, the status of the infrastructure in the new committee.
So I was waiting until we're at our next meeting, where we're interviewing and then appointing a new council member. So I will replace Mr. Shees and you all of the committees all at once.
Okay, so I think this would pretty much retain what's going on right now.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swett. Okay, any members of the public that wish to speak? Walter Griffin?
First of all, I want to address the cost event issue that we initially spoke about in my concern. Even though we've done it in the past, it doesn't matter, right? I think it's something that should be addressed by this council. We should not allow alcohol in our building. If we are, we certainly should make the person who's only leaving the apartment paying the security for the staff, for the cleanup. The county, that all comes down to general fund money. Once that event is over here and, and everybody leaves, it's up to building and grounds, it's up to the sheriff's department to provide the security for those people who are walking around the building with a drink in their hand. I think that needs to be addressed before we have any events in the county or the town. If you have a wedding, you have alcohol there. That's something that should not happen. And if they are going to have that type of event, they should be required to clean up the town after everybody's done. The county should be paying for that. That's a private affair. We're paying the bill for personnel to clean it up. There was no discussion about the manager's violation at the work session. I was very surprised that that was not on the agenda. Mr. Urban violating the charter. Everybody's hands were up and he are screaming and carrying on because he sat on the election board. He needed to be reprimanded. Yet we have a clear violation of the charter, clear violation of charter. It needs interpretation. There was no discussion. I don't understand why we don't address these type of issues. We're worried about mail-in ballots and all that other stuff, but we don't address the issue of, how do we fix the problem? We're going to continue with mail-in ballots? Why don't we put self-addressed envelopes so they can mail them in instead of using a drop box? Why don't we put self-seal envelopes on the outer envelope, so if somebody doesn't have to be concerned about licking an envelope, we're figuring out some way to seal it. Let's address those particular issues and fix those problems instead of worrying about, I don't, I don't agree with mail-in ballots at all. But if we're going to do it, let's at least make sure that we provide it as best we can with a proper way for people to do that. The other issue is the council clerk assistant, which was cast by this council. I was on it in April of last year, for Sharon. April of last year, we're almost a year and a half in, and she is yet to get it assisted. How sad is that? The money's appropriated, everything is in place, but we haven't done it. If we don't need it, let's just take it out of the budget, not do the process at all. But when council approved that, it was a necessary need. That's why they approved it. So why doesn't council have to get the assistant? Needs to be done. Priorities are, on this council, need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed quickly. We have no council member for over a month and a half. The last thing on my agenda is the voting bureau of elections funding for overtime. We're worried about mail-in ballots, but we couldn't count the ballots because we had no money according to the Bureau of Elections' record because we couldn't fund the overtime.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
So we need to address those issues as councils and be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And just to address a few things, I do believe there is a lease agreement, and they are paying for, the fee includes covering building and grounds as well as security. In addition to that, there's one other thing that I wanted to address that you had mentioned, oh, the assistant to council. We spoke about that last executive session. We got the applicants from HR and re-advertise or in the process of re-advertising that position since only, I think, three out of all of the applicants were still interested.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Raybock?
Madam Chair, with respect to the, how to say, infrastructure grant, I agree with Councilman Thornton with respect to what he said when he was questioning of Saturday V check as far as using other programs that the state has, such as Pennvest, which I, as a member of, was a member of the Hazelton City Water Authority, utilized for upgrading water filtration system. Then we used the Pennvest program, and it was at one and a quarter percent. As well as PIBLO, which can be used for roads and bridge unlike Pennvest. So that would be an option, which is, I think, one point four percent also. And then there's the Ratby grant, which you're all familiar with because this council approved the Ratby application, which involves fifty percent match of whatever the project request is. So I think what needs to be done is, just like we have the capital budget that's presented to you guys and lists the projects, why don't, you know, you guys ask the redevelopment authority as far as, or any of the persons that are applying through our window that we're going to have up for requests? That way you guys can have the same, you know, you guys will be able to look at it, the general public will be able to look at it, and then we'll all be on the same page. Because I believe when it comes to capital projects, everybody should know where to be standing, and we should all be on the same page. That's just my opinion, but I'm only one number forward. Now, when it comes to what was stated about the drop boxes and mail-in ballots, I totally agree with what Mr. Thornton said with respect to the state Supreme Court ruling. But also I want to clarify that state Supreme Court ruling in September of 2020, when the justices, the majority, said that there was a need for drop boxes because the threat to the health and safety of the voter. Okay, there was no, nothing in that ruling that said convenience for the voter. It was based, predicated, the justices predicated their ruling on the fact that we weren't entering into the COVID pandemic, and there was a threat, a real threat at that time because of the health and safety of the voter. So therefore, the ruling as it stands now, because there was no health and safety threat to the voter, now it's a moot point and it should be challenged. So I agree with Mr. Thornton in his resolution, and I hope, I hope you guys get it out the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybock. Any other members in the public that wish to speak? Mr. Newman?
On the issue of drop boxes, the election board could solve that very easily, pick them off the street. No drop boxes, or maybe one drop box at Penn Place where it's very secure, and the guard would be the controller on what goes in that box. One man, one vote. That's an option. Infrastructure, let me address that. When you borrow money for infrastructure, you're investing in your business. You're investing in the county. Can't survive in the future without keeping our infrastructure updated, whether it's for the Nocero plant, whether it's for Kirby Road, or the Amber Industrial Park, or whatever it's for in Luzerne County, Hazelton, Nescafe, Railway, anywhere, anywhere we can invest in the infrastructure of this county, we must do it now. Very conservative group, and fifty-five billion dollars is a lot of money. I can speak towards big numbers because business I was involved in, yeah, it was the US Postal Service. You can't believe the amount of money that's invested in processing mail, in delivering mail. And vehicles are always updated. The processing machines are always updated, and we keep going, going, going. Perhaps not in the most efficient manner that it should be, but the investments are made. I think it's up to this county, this council, to make the investment that needs to be done in the infrastructure of this county. I don't have a lot of years left in this county, but many of you do, okay? Do the right thing. Invest in your county.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other members of the public?
Yes, hi, it's Alyssa Fusara, Luzerne County Board of Elections. How are you guys? Thank you. Thank you very, very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to give you guys an update as to where we are. We started, we did count all the mail-in ballots. We did get through a good portion of the provisional ballots today. However, we did miss the deadline for the state, which was today. However, I, from what I understand, a lot of the counties are behind right now. So we did do a supplemental report. We've been getting various state guidance. One says to count the ballots without dates and with problem dates. And then we get further guidance that says, don't count them yet, set them aside. And so it has created a little bit of a challenge with what to do with these ballots. We also, though we have a Supreme Court ruling, do not have further clarification on their ruling and did not actually get their opinion yet. So that has been, made it a challenge as far as that's concerned. I did start to ask that the bureau be a little more fervent in their handling of the provisional ballots because there is quite a bit of information on the ballots. We had people, twenty-one exactly, of voters that came in and tried, they were registered Democrat and tried to vote provisionally by repub, by putting in a Republican ballot. And they were just going to push that aside. My, my, my concern with that is these people should be contacted if they really truly want to do that. And so we need to be a little bit more proactive in contacting voters, making sure that their information is updated, make sure, making sure that if they try to cast a Republican ballot, that, that, that we reach out to them and discuss with them if they choose to, you know, giving them the website, giving them the correct information in order to change their party affiliation if they so choose, or if they would like to. We've also had a few reports of people trying to change their voter registration or affiliation and it not being done either at all or in a timely manner. We've had, we've received several complaints of that. So obviously, on the drop box issue, you all know where I stand. I am completely one hundred percent against them because we do not have, not only the security, but we do not have the, the, you know, we don't have the things in place in order to offer them countywide and to also offer them in a way that would be safe and secure for all voters. So I, yes?
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Any other members of the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, second.
Do we have a first and a second? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, needing adjournment.